Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Marshburn.
Present.
Councilmember Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
And Councilmember Vance.
Here.
Lead us in, pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Spirit of living God, we thank thee for allowing us to be here on this evening. God, we ask that you guide our minds to do your will. We ask that you give us the wisdom and knowledge to govern your people. Father, we thank you for all that you've done and how you continue to bless us and keep us, how you provide for us in the midst of all adversity. We thank you, God, for all that you've done and all that you continue to do. And it's in your most precious Son, Jesus Christ's name I pray. And we all say.
Okay, next is petitions and comments. That's time on the agenda. Anyone can address the council on something that is not on the agenda. If you wish to address council, come to the podium, state your name and address. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council. My name is Ralph Carson. reside at 404 Hay River Street in Garner. We're from the Hunter's Mark subdivision, Jones Sausage Road. It's that little island of Garner that nobody seems to know about. I appeared before council last July 2nd of 2018 with regards to the SUP-SP-18-01, which was the Project Access, which we now know as the Amazon Project documents. We were told at that time that the Amazon Project Access was going to have 3,045 linear feet of four lanes in front of the Amazon property, new I-40 ramps, new intersection at Jones Sausage Road, Noel Garner Road, and that we would have a dedicated left turn lane coming out of Hunter's Mark subdivision. We are concerned, I've got members of the past HOA board and the current homeowners board with us this evening. When I appeared last year, I was the president of the Hunter's Mark Homeowners Association Board. We're concerned about what we see as delays in the designs, the plans, DOT encroachments happening on Jones Sausage Road, which we see very, very little, other than moving some initial utilities. And one of the things we'd like is a commitment from council and staff that Amazon will not be issued a certificate of occupancy until the widening is complete. We were told that both of those would be in conjunction last year, and we ask that council abide by that and not allow Amazon to bond off an uncompleted job and be allowed to open with the widening still not complete. The SUP document showed 58 loading docks and a left turn lane, which is the primary truck entrance, which is known as access number six, off of Jones Sausage Road. I brought this point up last year, that the plans currently showed about a 300-foot left turn lane. That would allow two to three tractor trailers to turn without backing up into traffic and closing off one of these other lanes. I've met with DOT and reviewed their comments on the plans, and they do not have an issue with extending that if Garner requests it to 500 or 600 feet. That would allow multiple tractor trailers coming in and out of that site to not interfere with through traffic going down Jones Sausage Road. One of the items that I addressed in the TIA document, which was done in May of 2018, was the traffic growth rates are just simply based on a 3% growth rate for traffic on Jones Sausage Road. Hunter's Mark has 205 homes, and our weekly traffic count is about 2,100 vehicles per week. Now, we know that there's new subdivisions in the area of Jones Sausage Road that total about 1,400 homes. And if you take that out and do that multiplication factor, that's about another 14,000 vehicle trips on Jones Sausage Road in one direction or another. And I don't believe that the current design, and possibly not the design as currently before DOT, is going to be sufficient, especially when you don't have the gap in the middle between the Amazon property and Garner intersection widened. It's going to be going four lanes at the I-40 ramps. You're going to be going down to three lanes. You're going to go down to two lanes. You get down to the intersection at Garner Road, you're back to four lanes. That's a recipe for disaster. And what I found out when I met with DOT is they have approved the driveway permits for the Amazon site. They have not approved any of the widening plans. They have not even began to do the signalization plans for the entrances to Calabar Street and access point number two, which is directly across the street. If the current project holds course and it finishes in October, they won't have anything done on the widening. And we were told we were going to have a dedicated left turn lane. Jones Sausage Road is at capacity now. With the I-40 widening occurring over the next four years, it's only going to get worse because everybody jumps off that to get over to Highway 70. Now we find out that they're closing Garner Road to do a bridge replacement. Auburn Church Road is closed in a few weeks. New Hope Road's going to be closed. So we are asking that Garner, council or staff, request of DOT if that turn lane at access point number six can be lengthened to 500 or 600 feet for trailers turning into Amazon. The current redesign or review, sorry, the second review of DOT plans do not show four lanes in front of Amazon's property. There's two lanes on the Amazon side of the road. There's going to be one lane of through traffic on the Hunter's Mark side of the road. That's because the next section of the road is down to two lanes. So instead of having a true four lanes like we were told, we're going to have three with a striped turn lane of 1,200 to 2,000 feet long going into Amazon. That's not what we were told. And we were here last year, and we supported the Amazon project based on what we were told in that document. So we are asking for the four full lanes that we were told, and we also want to get moving on the design for the remaining section. I'm not sure why the town did not initialize the design, hire an engineering firm back when they knew the secret discussions were going on with Project Access. At the very least, on July 3rd, the morning after they approved the SUP document, they should have had plans in place to start the design. As I understand it, that's just starting to roll now, which means you're going to be two or three years before you get that road designed, approved, get additional properties and do that. And that's just unacceptable planning.
Let me interrupt you, sir.
Yep.
Couple of things. One, I think I'd like you to go with our staff and talk about what you said about the three lanes. There's four lanes. That's what was approved. I think the CUP specifically says that it has to be, all the construction, road construction has to be done before issued. All that's a fact. The reason the town didn't jump on any faster is, for one thing, government moves, God knows, slow as it can be. Good Lord have mercy, it moves slow. To pay for the part from Amazon to Garner Road is several million dollars, 10 to 15 million dollars, and we can't pay that without some assistance. So we had to go through the steps, through the loops, to let it land up where we can get for the funding. So we've approved the consultant, already to take it all the way to and through Garner Road, and also a concept of 70. That's in the plans. We can't just ravel wind and do it because this is going to cost between 1.3 and 1.5 million dollars just to do that. We had to hire the consultant first to get the ball rolling. So it is god awful slow. I don't doubt what you say.
But just to clarify one of the points you made, that widening has not been approved. There is no approved plans from DOT. They're on the second review. So it hasn't even been approved yet. I was there and I viewed the plans.
I ask it our town engineer up here to address that because we know what we approved and we know what's got to be built.
Chris Johnson, town engineer. Yeah, the plans are under review by the NC DOT. I think the part that is missing here is the road is going to be widened to an ultimate curb width that would support a four-lane, four-lane section with a median. However, you can't, on the southbound, since we are going back to a two-lane section at the southern boundary of Amazon, you've got to provide striping that starts that taper well in advance. You can't stripe four lanes all the way to the boundary and then immediately merge to two lanes. So they have to start that taper southbound. And so some of that usability of the southbound lineage will not be fully functional until such time that that future section is extended all the way to Garner Road.
And I understand that, but that's not what was presented to us last year. We were going to have four lanes in front of the Amazon property, 3,045 linear feet in length. Now eventually that may happen, but that's not what's designed right now. And since DOT has not finalized the design, they haven't done the signalization. So right now, the exit from Calabar Street, making a left turn, there is no left turn lane on the current DOT plans. And what we are asking council and staff to look at is widening Calabar, where they're approximately six feet wide. It's currently 18 feet wide. If you get it a little bit wider, you could have a dedicated right turn straight through, and then you have a dedicated left turn. Now, again, that has to be requested from Garner because DOT finds that everything in the design meets the current criteria. But they are open to doing that because, as they explained and showed me the plans, on access point number two, you're going to have a turn in to enter Amazon site, and you're going to have three lanes coming out. So you're going to have a dedicated left turn, straight through, coming into Calabar, or a right turn. So if we had a left turn designated, they have the left turn designated, the signalization could be unsynced, so both left lanes turn at the same time. That's not in the current design.
I suggest that you set up a meeting with our assistant managers, our engineer and our planning staff, and talk to them because we're not, council can't do anything about that. I think that's the best way to roll. Mr. Harrison, and other folks from Hunter's Mark, is to talk with our staff because we know what we approved. And I think Mr. Johnson explained it, that the four lanes can't go all the way till it stops down to two. It's got to taper somewhere. But they have to have the four lanes, don't matter what the plans say now, I know what we approved and what we were told and what was funding. So again, DOT plans are under review and they hadn't been finalized. So I would urge you to meet with them and let's proceed forward because we're not going to, the council's not, you seem to be very well informed on it, so that's why I say I would think it'd be best if you would sit down with them.
And I have no problem doing that. I have two more quick points. We are looking for increased speeding enforcement in our neighborhood. Speed limit in there is 25 miles an hour. We have begged and pleaded with the town of Garner. I've reached out to Wake County sheriffs. They were going to get involved. Traffic counts show we have 4,242 vehicles over a two-week period. The north section of Hay River Street, we have 1,478 speeders over 30 miles an hour, which is already five miles an hour over the speed of it. The southern portion of Hay River Street, we had over 1,200 speeders over 30. The highest speed in the 25 mile an hour zone recorded by the Garner radar was 69 miles an hour. We've had one child hit already. We've had five near misses. Two of them involve a handicapped child. We have asked and requested and begged and pleaded, and the few times they have shown up, they show up with a fully marked police car with all the reflective tape on it, which you can see for 500 feet away. And even if somebody's going the speed limit, they slow down, they get by, they'll text it and put it on Facebook that there's a police officer there, and then everybody slows down. We've asked for an unmarked car, whereas if somebody does get by, they're not going to know that it's probably a police car. We are requesting that the town do a minimum of two speed enforcements a week, particularly between 6:00 a.m. and 8:30 a.m., when we have five or six school bus pickups and things there. At that time period, according to traffic count, we have 796 vehicles exiting. It's a lot of vehicles, a lot of kids on the street. Between 7:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m., there's another 644 vehicles. Those are the two times when a lot of people will speed excessively going in and out of the subdivision. And sometimes two wide, sometimes three wide, and they're racing up Hay River Street.
Either texting or typing or writing or doing something, since you've said all this information.
He can say them for you.
I think you've got their attention.
I'm writing, sir.
Okay, he's writing, he's doing something back there. You started giving statistics. You said that there were, how many cars exiting at what time?
Between 6:00 a.m. and 8:30 a.m., 796.
Or exiting.
Boing, boing, in and out buses and there's.
Okay, I was going to say. Because we're 210 houses, 796 trips, that's four cars of a house. I was getting ready to say, unusual numbers there. Okay, I understand now.
This came from the radar data from Garner.
Gotcha.
So that's what I pulled it off.
Gotcha.
So we're asking for a minimum of two a week during those time periods with an unmarked car. And if we can get that enforcement in there, we may save a life. And I don't want to have somebody call and say, you lost a child. We've had pets hit and killed, and the cars keep right on rolling. And most of the problematic high speeders seem to be renters in the neighborhood, which 25% of our neighborhood is now rental properties. One last thing I'd like to request is speed bumps. We'd like to set up three speed bump areas in the neighborhood on Hay River Street. We could get with staff to determine those locations. We'd even offer the HOA to vote on approving to cover that cost ourselves. Now, I know there's certain bylaws and statutes where it has to be 15% of the vehicles travel 15 miles an hour or more in order to get speed bumps. We'd like to request that we get them and we'll pay for them, and we'll try to save a life.
If you give a staff of that, they can do that because that has to be something that the neighborhood has to buy into. Buy into, the whole neighborhood has to buy into.
Okay. That's all I have, gentlemen and ladies, and thank you very much. And I will reach out to staff to try and set up a meeting to review this while it's still in the DOT review stage because once everything gets finalized, it would take an act of God in order to get all of this stuff changed again. And while they're still designing the roads, now's the time to do it, and then signalization can follow. So thank you very much.
And staff.
Drop the pen.
Staff does have your comments for your DOT review and have been reviewing those, so we'll be back in touch with you to set that up.
When you meet with Mr. Harrison, also get the information in regards to the traffic common devices, get it same time, start that process.
Does council want to spend more time on this tonight?
Nope.
I think it's probably be referred to the staff, and I'm sure they'll follow up on that. Okay, next is the adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to make one alteration to the agenda, Mr. Mayor. Oh, is there another person? Like now? Oh, okay. All right. Well, we think we have one other person that would like to speak, Mr. Tatum, I guess in the same neighborhood?
Sir, come to the mic.
Oh, did he cover everything? Okay.
Yes, he did, and I'll advocate my position to speak to someone else.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate that. The change I wanted to make, Mr. Mayor, was under public hearings, is move number one to the last item in public hearings so we can get the others out of the way, since we have probably some outside folks in for that. So we'll move that budget public hearing to number, it'll be the fourth item under public hearings.
And, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to ask for a brief closed session, I guess at the end of the regular agenda, to discuss a personnel issue. Okay, the amended agenda's before you. I move we approve the agenda.
I'm sorry. One other adjustment is on the contract for the road work, number three, under new old business, that the contract award should be North State and not Gelder, but we'll, I mean, we'll get to that. The White Oak Sewer Bid Award, but if you can make that change on the agenda, just a typo there, project to be awarded to North State contractors. And that's it.
Okay, with that change noted, I move approval of the agenda, the amended agenda.
Okay.
Motion to move, second. All in favor, both say aye.
Aye.
Chief, did you want to make a statement, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As we prepare to do the proclamation for Police Week, as we've done for many years, and we certainly appreciate, I wanted to just bring everybody's attention and ask for perhaps a quick moment of silence out of respect for Officer Jordan Sheldon with the Mooresville Police Department, who gave his life, was murdered in the line of duty Saturday evening. So if you don't mind, I would like to ask that before we do the proclamation. Thank you.
Yeah, I had the proclamation. I'm going to ask individual members of council to read it, pass it to, end of line. Those first five, yeah.
Proclamation, Peace Officers Memorial Day, Police Week in Garner. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States, through Public Law 887-726, signed by President John F. Kennedy in 1962, proclaim May 15th as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas Public Law 103-322, signed by President William Clinton in 1994, directs that the flag of the United States of all government buildings be displayed at half-staff on May 15th of each year. And whereas the members of the Garner Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the town of Garner. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agents, agencies, and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of the Garner Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Williams, Mayor of the Town of Garner, North Carolina, do call upon all citizens of the Town of Garner and upon all patriotic civic educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through 18th, 2019, as National Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances, in which all our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who may by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so, have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Further, I call upon all citizens of Garner to observe May 15th, 2019, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. Signed, Ronnie S. Williams, Mayor.
Elmo, will you present that to Chief? Chief. Chief. Thank you. Next is the consent agenda.
To approve.
Second. Motion made and second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, both say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, there's four public hearings. I'm going to ask the attorney to come forward and present the town's position.
Well, I'm sorry, we skipped one. I'm with you. I was catching up. Ladies and gentlemen, it's the town attorney's made due to explain some things to the public and about the nature of some of the hearings we're going to have tonight. We have a number of hearings involving different matters of zoning. One, a particular one coming up right now, is a conditional use district, case Z-1901 and CUP SP-1901 Pine Ridge Apartments. And my particular comments that I will make will relate to that particular case, which is different from an ordinary general zoning district, zoning case. In a conditional use case, the property is zoned in connection with a zoning, which will be explained to you by the staff, which selects and deselects certain possible uses from the property and customizes the use of the property in connection with a zoning The public is allowed and entitled and invited to speak on that application. First, we'll have the applicant speak, and then we'll have the, I mean, the staff will speak, and then we'll have the applicant speak. The public can ask any questions or make comments as it wishes on those. As a part of that same hearing, we will then proceed into a second phase, which is a slightly different type of hearing, and it's what's called a conditional use permit case, or actually, in this case, yeah, in which the testimony is typically given by persons who have specialized training experience in planning, engineering, that sort of thing. We'll deal with those issues when we get there. It's not really a forum for the public to appear in. Once we get into that phase, and I'll explain that to you when we get there. In a conditional use or special use permit case, the legislature has established that there are some rules that the council has to be bound by, and some rules that this hearing needs to be governed by. First, it is required that we ask of the council members whether any of them have formed any biases or formed any opinions about the matter that could not be changed during the course of the hearing. I'll ask if anybody has any such opinions.
None.
Answer being none. That solves that problem because if they had, they would be asked to step down from the case. The second issue that is posed to the council, ladies and gentlemen, is whether there have been any communications of the type which the law considers to be ex parte communications, that is, communications typically by an applicant or an opponent of a particular zoning application, which occur by telephone, in person, and email, whatever, prior to the hearing. The goal being that this be more or less like a court, and the evidence which is heard actually comes into the hearing room at the hearing rather than beforehand. So I would ask of the council the same type of question, but specifically, in this case, have there been any ex parte communications that anyone has received in connection with this case? The next thing we have to do in a quasi judicial proceeding is that the law requires that the testimony of the persons testifying in the quasi judicial part, as opposed to the ordinary zoning part, the people that testify in that second part of it do so only on oath or affirmation. So I would ask for any person who wishes. So I would ask for any person who wishes to testify in connection with the specific plans of this project, site plan, that sort of thing, to come forward at this time so that the clerk can administer the oath. And again, this is CUDZ1901, CUPSP1901 Pine Ridge Apartments. My center can't hear? All right, now, we're ready to open that matter for hearing, CUDZ1901 and CUPSP1901 Pine Ridge Apartments. I think Mr. Patel will, or Mr. Banford will be first.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. This is a conditional use zoning and site plan application. The applicant is Evergreen Construction. The property is located, it has an address off of Fayetteville Road, but the site is on Small Pine Drive. The site is approximately 6.24 acres in size, and the planning commission did review this case at their meeting on April the 15th.
David, let me open the public here for you.
This map shows the boundary of the project site and the zoning site. Small Pine Drive goes through the site and intersects it. The site has road frontage on Pine Winds Drive, and Fayetteville Road is directly to the west here, running north to south. There are multifamily apartments directly to the south in this vicinity. There are some multifamily townhomes directly to the east in this vicinity, and farther to the east is Greenbrier Subdivision, which contains single-family homes. And the uses along Fayetteville Road include commercial, retail, and light industrial. This is a Google Earth street view of the project site. This is looking east, and the property is on both sides of Small Pine Drive. This map shows the zoning in this vicinity. The property is zoned community retail, which is a commercial zoning district. Directly to the south where the apartments are is zoned multifamily two. The townhouse of community is zoned multifamily one. The site that contains the Walmarts and OutParcels with commercial, that's zoned service business. Greenbrier Subdivision is zoned R15, single-family. This chart shows the most recent zoning cases in this area, with the most recent rezoning case from 2016, and this was at 130 Anaron Court, which is about a quarter mile north of this site. The existing zoning is community retail, and this is a retail zoning district that allows restaurants, office, uses with indoor operations. This zoning district does not allow uses with outdoor operations like auto sales or uses with outdoor storage. The requested zoning classification is multifamily two with conditions MF2C214. Apartments are not a permissible use in the current commercial zoning, so the applicants are requesting to rezone to MF2. The proposed project consists of 72 units. This chart shows all of the permissible uses in the MF2 zoning district. The next page will show the restricted or narrow range of uses proposed. So the applicant is proposing to narrow that list on the previous page down to this list of permissible uses. So everything else that would be allowed at MF2 would not be permissible on the site, only these listed here. The proposed use would fall into this category here, multifamily. In addition to narrowing the range of permissible uses, the applicant has also proposed two additional conditions. So number one would be the list of permissible uses. Number two would be that amenities shall include a gazebo, an 1,150 square foot minimum playground area, and a 320-foot square foot minimum picnic area with two tables. Number three, the building height shall be limited to a maximum of four stories. This shows the traffic counts in this vicinity of the project site, and the source of this information is from NCDOT, and they take traffic count information in odd years. So the most recent traffic counts we have available are from 2017. 2019 traffic counts will be available in 2020. So according to the 2017 NCDOT traffic counts, this area here, which is closest to the project site, shows an average daily traffic count of around 36,000 trips per day. The comprehensive Garner Ford Plan designates this project's site as high-density residential, and under this description, this would allow single-family, duplex, triplex, quadplexes, and townhome-style developments at a density of not less than five units per acre. This designation does not recommend apartments. So under the proposal, there would be a comprehensive plan amendment to designate, or redesignate the site from high-density residential, which doesn't include apartments as a use, to multifamily. These are some guiding principles from the long-range plan, and the ones highlighted in yellow are the ones that would apply to the development. Attract young and old populations. We are seeing a trend towards people that are interested in less maintenance, smaller yards, and apartments and townhomes. Promoting multifamily housing in select areas, and also affordable housing. As mentioned, the proposal for apartments is not consistent with the future land use plan. Again, the current designation on the Garner Ford Plan is high-density residential, which includes townhouses, but it does not include apartments. So there would be, this application would require an amendment to the future land use map to designate this site from high-density residential to multifamily residential. We'd also like to say that the proposed zoning MF2 is consistent with the surrounding zonings. We have MF2 directly to the south, MF1 directly to the east, and we also have commercial uses to the west along Fayetteville Road. And I am finished with this portion of the presentation. Stacy will give the presentation on the details of the proposed site plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the zoning portion.
David, I think you just mentioned the adjacent locations and the current uses. Would you mind repeating that and putting your, using a pointer to what those classifications are? Edit.
Regarding the zoning or the long-range plan.
Current use.
Current use, sure. So the current use of the site is vacant, undeveloped. Directly to the east, we have a townhome community. To the north is Trade Street. This is a commercial, light industrial type. There are uses along that street that are light industrial. We do have retail, commercial uses directly in this vicinity with some light industrial uses a little farther to the south on Fayetteville Road. We have Pine Winds Apartments directly to the south in this area here, zoned MF2. And this site's approximately maybe quarter, almost a half a mile south of the intersection of Garner Station Boulevard and Mechanical Drive.
Have you got any idea of the size of the Pine Winds development?
As far as the number of units?
Oh, just acreage, total acreage compared to the proposed site?
I don't have that information.
Is it at least three times or four times as large, you think?
The southern boundary of the site would be a little bit off the map. I'd say maybe one-third of the proposed project site, I would guess maybe is one-third the size of the site to the south, just a estimate.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions? Is anyone from the applicant wish to speak on the zoning aspects as opposed to the site plan?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Rick Baker. I'm with the Timmons Group with a civil engineer on the project. My address is 5410 Trinity Road, Suite 102 in Raleigh, 27607. We appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you this evening on this zoning case. A couple items I did want to point out, and thank you, Mr. Banford, for your presentation this evening. With the current zoning of commercial retail now, the allowable uses are, in addition to the townhomes and things like that that he noted, such as other uses, such as a restaurant with a drive-through, or a convenience store also allowed at this point. So what zoning to a multifamily-type project would actually, could be a less intensive use of this property. And in a typical planning fashion, on a thoroughfare, you have your commercial-type uses that we have here. The next step is generally a multifamily-type development before you get to a less intense use like a townhome or single-family development. So that's what we're proposing in this type of project here today. The high-density residential, even though it does not call for multifamily in the Garner Code, we feel like we're meeting the intent of that with multifamily, because the high-density residential is greater than five units per acre, which we would be at about 11.5 units per acre with the apartment complex. So also have with me today is Mr. Tim Morgan from Evergreen Construction, and he's available to answer some questions, as am I.
Any questions, comments? Okay, I don't have none.
Thank you very much.
Any members of the public wish to be heard in connection with this one? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Jennifer McLachlan, 4415 Parkwood Drive, 27603. I am the president of the Greenbrier Homeowners Association. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of some of our neighbors. So we're just concerned about changing the zoning of this particular patch of land, given the plans currently with the DOT. Currently, when you go out of Pine Winds, there's a light there. With the new DOT's plans for Fayetteville Road, that light will actually be taken away. So the in and out of that street are going to be very confined already. To get 75 new residential multifamily homes in there is going to be lots more traffic already on a really busy street, and then to not have a light at that intersection just makes it more concerning. And then in turn, that causes lots more cut-through traffic into our neighborhood, which is already seeing a lot of cut-through traffic. Again, as some other folks spoke up earlier in the meeting, we have lots of very fast cars going through our neighborhood, and it's very concerning to have more people cut through. In addition, you know, we're happy to see that piece of land developed. Right now, it collects a lot of trash, and we actually frequently, as a neighborhood, go over there to pick it up, because we don't like to see that as part of our neighborhood. So we're certainly happy to see it developed. We want to see something good go in there. But we're concerned with the density in that area. We're also concerned because, you know, quarterly, we have our homeowners association meetings, and the police come and give a report on the crime in the area. 99% of the crime we see in our neighborhood area comes from the existing Pine Winds apartment complex, and so we're just concerned that we're continuing to add high-density area, high-density living in an area that already, it's just going to cause additional troubles. So we'd like to work with you, and, you know, certainly we're open to townhomes or something that's just going to be a little less impactful on the neighborhood as a whole. So I'd just like to voice our concerns tonight about the size and the multifamily zoning, and how it will impact our neighborhood. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Wendy Morgan. I'm the president of the Pine Winds Townhomes Homeowners Association. My address is 1278 Shadow Bark Drive, 27603. I have the same concerns as the lady who just spoke. I also, there's no way you can take down that traffic light, not without people getting killed. There's no way. It just can't happen. Pine Winds Townhomes is concerned the houses back up, the yards, backyards of the houses back up to that land. We'd like to know if there's going to remain a natural buffer. I disagree with the statement about it'll be less intensive use, because part of the reason I think that no one has built on that land is because you put a Hardee's down there, there's no traffic on that street. Nobody's going to come down there and buy from any business that were to build in that area, and I think that's why there aren't any there now. But if you put 72 units on six acres, and say there's three people per unit, that's over 200 people on six acres, plus they have to have a place to park, it's just, it's going to be really smushed. And it's not going to, I don't think it's going to add anything positive to the area. I agree with the crime statistics. So far, it's been a nice, quiet area, and adding 200 more people to six acres, I just don't, I think that's way over high-density. So I hope that you all will reconsider. I don't know that I'm that concerned about the actual zoning of the area, but I am concerned about you're allowing 72 apartment units on six acres of land in an already densely populated area that's managing quite well as it is. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can we ask questions before, or Ms. Harper's going to, Ms. Harper's going to talk? You can talk.
I think we're ready.
Go right ahead. Go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Again, as David said, I am Stacy Harper, and I'm here to talk about the site plan portion of this project. Reiterating, it is 6.24 acres with 72 apartment units. There is a landscape and buffer requirements, of course, the tree coverage requirement, and everything you'll see, I've kind of divided up into the north section, which is north of Small Pine, and then the south section because each parcel, each part of that parcel needs to stand alone for the requirements. So, for the north side, 13% tree coverage was required, and they're showing 13.5% currently. And on the south side, 12.5% is required, and they're showing 17.3% tree coverage. There are perimeter buffers on both the north and east sides of the project between this project and the two multifamily projects that David has mentioned earlier. Both of those are 15 feet. And then, along Small Pine and Pine Woods Drive, there are street trees about every 40-foot on center as a street buffer. They do require 10% open space. You see it again, broken down by the north and south side. They have provided 13.9% on the north side and 27.9% on the south side. They are including a community clubhouse, gazebo, and playground as part of the amenities of the project. And the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Resources Department did recommend a fee in lieu of parkland dedication for this project as well. The inspections Department, together with the Fire Department, has reviewed and approved the site plan. As you'll see, the site does not contain any FEMA-designated flood zone or floodway. For stormwater, the site is subject to stormwater quality regulations for nitrogen as well as retention, regulations for detention of the 1, 10, 25, and 100-year storms. There are two bio-retention areas and two underground detention areas that treat both water quantity and water quality, and reduces the nitrogen below the allowable threshold of 10 pounds per acre per year. There will be a nitrogen offset payment required. It will connect, the project will connect to City of Raleigh Water and Sewer Infrastructure through existing services that are there already on Small Pine and Pine Woods. The site does have about 531 feet of frontage along Small Pine Drive, which is a 22-foot-wide, town-maintained facility within a 50-foot right-of-way. And they will have two access points off of Small Pine. Sidewalk is provided along Small Pine Drive to Pine Winds to tie into the existing sidewalks there. There you see the site plan, again, divided between the north and south by Small Pine. I've highlighted the areas there in green that show the community clubhouse and where the male kiosks will be, and the playground on the north side of the road. And then, there are open space and the gazebo on the south side of the road, and the two bio-retention areas, one on each side of the road as well.
Good question. The open space, is it open space or is it left natural like it is? It's open space. I'm assuming it's...
Where the gazebo is, is grass and planted areas, but the perimeter areas are more natural.
The ones at the, at the north end of this, the top, there's a big square, it's open space, and there's a small square, open space. That's left natural?
Yes. There's a planted buffer that's on the very north side of that, but the ones, and there actually is a buffer along the western property line as well. So, it won't be completely natural, but it will be planted.
Ms. Harper, is...
Yes, sir.
If you stay there just a minute. Are there, are there other recreational amenities on the north sides other than the playground?
The, there's a clubhouse over there, and then the playground.
I was just thinking about outside.
There's, there's open space areas and grassy areas that are where that, south of where that bio-retention area is.
We call, could we classify the open space where the gazebo is, is proposed? Could we classify that as open space for, for somebody to be out moving around, children to play?
Yes, sir. There is green space around there.
But is it, is it protected, or is it particularly from the traffic on, on the street there?
It's behind a sidewalk. There is a sidewalk right there.
Would you think that the, that the playground is a scale drawing on this map? I think it was referred to as 320 square feet, and that's, that's about 17 or 18 by 17 or 18. Doesn't sound like very large, but I was just wanting to clarify that.
They have committed to that minimum in the zoning change, so that is reflecting, is what's reflected on the plan.
Is there a specific requirement about that, or is...
We do not have a specific requirement, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you just ask, Mr. Kennedy, yes, about the playground being how big?
320 square feet.
According to this, the playground's 1,150 feet, and the 320 square feet is the picnic area. 1,150 square foot playground area.
Okay. My mistake. That's about 30 to 30, then. 35 to 35.
Yeah, they have a picnic shelter over there as well.
Can, can somebody clarify for me? I've heard a couple citizens talk about the, with the elimination of a, of a traffic light, stoplight.
I think we can in a minute. I cannot speak to that because I was not as part of that program with the 401. Do you want to tell that?
Superstreet.
Chris and I were just reviewing the plans, and he wasn't here when those were coming through. But there is still a light there, but it is not a full movement access in all four directions. So, there is a light that controls the left-turn movements off of 401 so that the traffic there in those lanes does not back up. So, they will stop traffic on 401 to allow those left-turn movements to take place. But you will not be able to go straight across from Pine Winds to Persor and vice versa.
But will you be able to turn out of Pine Winds and go left and go south on 401?
No.
So, you'll turn right, go up...
So, you'll turn right, go up, and do a U-turn.
Was that the superstreet or another name?
So, the full movement access is at Anaron and then down at Old Stage. So, this, this is a superstreet construction, so they, you, people will have to get in the habit of doing the right and doing the U-turn. But you will have, but you will have green, you will have green lights that will enable you to do that.
And just, and remember, residents, this is public hearing. It's not a public talk, talking time. But remember, that has nothing to do with this. That is totally separate. Has nothing to do with this. They're disconnected, but it has something to do with everything, but it's disconnected. Don't, we understand that, just like with this, a state highway, and the state says that's what they're going to do. We get to, we can fight and argue with it, but it's, yes, the superstreet concept.
Those are the plans.
So, I guess the applicant could better answer this question, perhaps. I was going to ask, do, will there be, what the size of the apartments, are they one, two bedrooms, or more than that? And what's the price point on them, if somebody could tell me?
They're, they're one and two bedrooms, but I'll let the applicant speak to the price point and things of that nature because I do not know that information. Going through also, as required for parking, there are 163 spaces that are required that are based on the number of bedrooms included in the development as well as the community building, and they have provided 163 spaces. We have looked at the lighting plan. It does meet the requirements for the UDO as well as the staff recommendations for LED lighting. The 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan does not provide any recommendations for Small Pine Drive. With the improvements along Small Pine Drive, including the sidewalks on both sides, this project, as proposed, may be found in conformity with the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan. For the Parks and Rec Open Space and Greenways Master Plan, there were no recommendations for this site. Therefore, as proposed with the fee in lieu of parkland dedication, this project may be considered in conformance with the Parks and Recreation Open Space and Greenways Master Plan. And after sufficient review and plan revision, staff does find that this project is now proposed conforms to the regulations of the Unified Development Ordinance so long as the site-specific conditions are met. And those would be, we would ask you to include, prior to the issuance of the first building permit, the Stormwater Program Administrator shall be in receipt of proof of payment for the required nitrogen offset payment to an approved mitigation bank, and also, prior to each building permit, a fee in lieu of parkland dedication shall be paid to the town of Garner. The Planning Commission did review this request at their April 15 meeting. With a unanimous vote, the Planning Commission confirmed staff's findings in Section 6 of the report that CUP SP 1901 Pine Ridge Apartments is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies and accepted staff statements regarding the zoning consistency, or lack thereof, with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan that was detailed in Section 4 of the report as their own, and recommended approval of CUDZ 1901 to the town council with a simultaneous amendment to the comprehensive plan to designate the property from high-density residential to multifamily residential. And we do have recommended motions for you as well in your packet. And again, I'll be happy to ask, answer any more questions that you have. The applicant and the engineer for the project is here as well.
Okay, well, if there's any more residents here that want to speak, we're going to give you time after the council has any more questions. I would, I would just like to know what the rental price point's going to be for these apartments out there, if you know them.
I think the applicant has some witnesses here that want to come and speak on the site plan.
I don't think you can answer that question.
We can wait and let somebody else speak.
Well, the applicant testified, some folks have some questions. You can ask the questions, then they'll, they'll answer them after.
Good evening. My name is Tim Morgan with Evergreen Construction, 77066 Forks Road, Raleigh NC, 27615. Mr. Kennedy, just to point of clarification, page 45, Bullet 2, does spell out the square footage of the playground so that you can see that as well as the picnic area. So, it was 1,150 for the playground as a minimum and 320 on the picnic area. So, that's where that came from, sir.
Thank you.
Just to kind of discuss the, the development itself, as, as the map shows, you've got six residential buildings on the site with one clubhouse. There are 12 residential units per building, and these are three-story buildings that we are proposing. And Mr. Marshburn, I believe, asked about the units themselves. They are, we're offering one, two, and three-bedroom units. The square fetages, and these are net square fetages, the one-bedrooms are 741, the two-bedrooms are 907 square feet, and the three-bedrooms are 1,197 square feet. And then, I believe, the last question Mr. Marshburn asked was the rental rates. The range, as if you will, will go from 375 on up to $925.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
I hate to show my ignorance, but I frequently do, so tonight's nothing unusual. Were you the builder and developer of the apartment complex, 48 units at the corner of Timber and 50?
Yes, sir. You're for the Timber Spring Apartments, yes. That's a, that's a 48-unit elderly-designated rental community that we opened a few years ago.
These, what prompted me was trying to remember what the rental rates were on that versus the rental rates you quote here. What's similar about the two of them? Although this, this is not necessarily 455 and above, it, or in effect, are these subsidized, are these subsidized rates?
This proposal is similar to Timber Spring that you talked about as far as its financing mechanism goes. And at Timber Spring, it is age-restricted, meaning at least one person in the household has to be 55 years of age or older. One- and two-bedroom units there. The rents there, top of my head, are anywhere from like 375, and I think the top out of like 750. Okay. And so, at this development that we are proposing, you know, it's, it's open to all ages, so we can have people that live there to, you know, 18 years of age that can sign a contract on up to, you know, whatever age.
I think you, you told us at the time you were developing Timber Springs that that's, that your, your company develops the property, maintains the property, manages it, and carries through on ownership as opposed to building it and selling it off. I was wondering how things are going at Timber Springs, just in a broad sense, and is that you're still, is that still your current mode of, mode of operation?
Right. Evergreen Construction, we've been around since 1978, and we operate only in the state of North Carolina. We have, we develop, we build, and we manage under that name, so we are married to the property, so to speak. We have just over 50 employees. We have our home office on 6 Forks Road. We have 43 communities in our portfolio right now, which is just under eight, or 1,900 units. And so, yes, that will be the same for this development if it moves forward, is that, you know, we were, developed it, we'll build it, we'll manage, manage it, we'll hang on to it. Thank you.
So, I'm sure, would the amenities of this new place be very similar to what's at Spring Apartments?
No, in the, in the, the difference is at, at Timber Spring, it's, it's, it's in one building, so that building has approximately 20% of, of common area. So, when you walk into it, it's kind of like going into a hotel, where you have a common corridors going left and right, and in the core of the building is our common area amenities. You know, have like a lounge, a TV room, an exercise room, a computer lab, so forth. Here, these are walk-up buildings, so the, the units themselves, each apartment is, is one level, but it's a three-story building, so you're using a stairwell to get to the second, to the third floor. The common areas, if you will, as we talked about, the playground, the gazebo, the picnic shelter, there is a clubhouse onsite, and that is where our onsite manager works out of. But in there, there's also a onsite laundry facilities. We have a computer center in there, and then we have a multipurpose room for functions and so forth.
What is your occupancy rate at Timber Springs?
99% with a two-year waitlist.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Excuse me, I believe some of the ladies might have had some questions. Do you all have any, you all just like to come up and address any questions that this gentleman might be able to answer? Yes, please.
Jane Watt, 1282 Shadow Bark Court, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27603. I am new to the Pine Winds Town Home development. I've not lived there a year, and I can attest to the crime I was broken into within a month of moving in. Traffic there is horrendous. Trying to get out on 401 in the morning, I think you see that 39,000 cars just in the morning.
Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me. The, the opportunity for the public to speak on general issues was during the zoning part. If you have any questions...
I'm sorry. I have a specific question. I'm sorry. I do have a specific question. Can you describe to me or explain to me again what a bio-retention area is and what, what exactly that is?
Yes, again, I'm Rick Baker with the Timmins Group. I'm the engineer on the projects. I'll be best answer that question.
I'll be best answer that question. A bioretention area is a stormwater treatment device. This design, there are a couple of different designs, but this design, what you would see in a normal setting is a grassed area. It'll look like a grass depression, just like your lawn. Below that grass is a few feet of a special soil mixture, so the stormwater drains through the grass and through that soil mixture, and the pollutants are removed in that soil mixture before it's discharged. We also have underground detention as part of this, so the stormwater flow leaving the site after development will be no more than what it is today. So it'd be no impact downstream on the stormwater. Did that answer your question?
One of those outside in front of Town Hall out here.
One looks like, out there, just a low area catches the water.
Let's conclude the applicant's presentation. This lady has another question. Come on up, please, ma'am.
Jill Wendy Morgan, 1278 Shadow Bar. Can you tell me exactly what the buffer will be between the site plan and Pine Winds Townhomes?
It'll be a 15-foot planted buffer.
Planted with what? Trees, bushes?
It's a combination of shade trees, the large bushes that are the medium layer, and then regular shrubs.
Will it provide a visual buffer?
That's the intent, yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's, because it seems like, I don't know where the lighting's going to be, but it seems like all the noisy common areas are backing up to the back of Pine Winds, and the townhomes along that side, all the bedrooms are on the back. Are people going to have streetlights in their bedroom windows?
No, ma'am. There's no lights leaving the site. After, the lights diminish as they go out to the property line, and they're required to be at a zero-light level as they get off the property line.
Okay. So, but there will be a visual buffer?
Yes, ma'am.
Between the townhomes?
It's a 15-foot planted buffer, yes, ma'am.
And the area. Okay. And my one other question is, these 65-year-old people that are going to live on this third floor, and they're going to walk up stairs?
I think you got the wrong understanding, that he didn't say it was 65 years old. This is open to the public, and they'll have a choice of what they want to rent.
I thought he said there would be one 65-year-old per unit.
I think that was, I think that we were asking for comparison of a complex that they developed in another part of town.
And the rents that they're going to be charging are a good bit below Pine Winds Apartments. So it will attract different people. Again, I have a huge issue with putting that many people on six acres. Thank you.
My name is Charles Dingee, 1316 Pine View Drive, Garner, North Carolina 27529. I don't live near this site or anything of that nature, but something to take note, or kind of a question I have. There's 163 parking spaces for 72 units. To me, that's just around the average nationwide. Average household has 2.2 vehicles per two units. Is there a possibility they'd be able to have additional parking spaces there? If not, where would potential overflow parking be when your parking spaces are filled? Thank you.
Yes, in response to the parking question, 163 spaces is the Garner Code Minimum Required Parking. And actually, with this type of apartment use and the product Evergreen has, typically, this is, there's way many additional parking spaces that are needed for the residents there. Typically, they would expect to probably have about 100 cars or so at a complex like this. So we don't think excess additional parking will be an issue for this complex.
Will I have you there?
Yes, sir.
You have one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. What are the numbers of each?
There are 24 one-bedrooms, 36 two-bedrooms, 12 three-bedrooms. And I had a couple other comments about the site plan I'd like to make, if the questions are completed at this point.
Go ahead.
I guess, based on the parking and what he just stated, it sounds like this will also bring a fair amount of public transportation traffic, folks living in this apartment complex. So I'd just like us all to think about where the nearest bus stop is, which I believe is across 401 in the Kmart parking lot, which is a bit of a safety concern considering that they're making that a superhighway. That's just a food for thought, from your point of view, in terms of how people are going to get transportation in and out of the apartment complex.
We appreciate that comment. In design of these projects, obviously, safety of these residences is utmost importance to the developer. They don't want to have an unsafe complex for anyone to live. So those types of things, we take into consideration when locating an apartment complex. Any more questions, or should I add my additional comments on the site plan? Okay. On this site, we worked really hard laying this site out to keep the residential buildings away from the east and the south as much as we could, to provide additional green space and buffering to our neighbors. You can see on the south, looking at the plan on the southeast corner where the bioretention area is and that green space in that corner, that's a pretty, pretty large green space there, right adjacent to the Townhome Development. Honestly, we could have squeezed in another building and had more units and parking on this plan, but the developer chose 72 units. So we have not maximized the site. So we don't feel it's being overburdened to the project. We also, because Small Pines Drive splits its property, we also divided the amenities up between in the north and the south side, with the community building and the playground area and picnic area built on the north side, and on the south side, the gazebo and that green space in the center that you see between the two residential buildings there. Also, as I'm sure you're all aware, Garner has a pretty intense landscape requirement in their UDO, and we have met that. And with that, that's a lot of, we're preserving the trees we can preserve, but then adding a lot more new trees and shrubs as well to give a visual barrier to all sides of the property. And we will feel that would be a benefit to the neighbors as well. You know, a UDO is a code that's developed by towns and communities for the welfare and safety of their citizens, and that's why it's in place. And we are meeting all the requirements of your UDO with design, with intent of being the welfare and safety of the citizens. One last thing I did want to add. There's been some talk about traffic, and just as a comparison, we ran the numbers on if this was developed as a commercial development. It would hold approximately 60,000 square feet of a retail development. If that was developed, there'd be about 4,200 daily trips to retail development to this 6.24 acres, 4,200. The average daily trips for the 72 units is 503. So what could be developed on the site today, this would be a much less intense use of that. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Those traffic numbers are something we questioned in the past when we rezoned the same way apartments. And that's not only, this isn't a Garner number or Wake County number, this is national standard numbers that commercial, retail would generate two to five times as much traffic, sometimes more, which I know we all think that, no, the apartments are more intense, but actually, the apartments are less intense. And studies show, traffic studies will show it over and over, because what retail could bring, so. I know you don't think that's true, but we've seen the numbers, and they've done it before on several other things. I mean, currently, a 24-hour convenience store by gas sales could go there. I'm just saying. I don't, sometimes you have to be careful what things, it could go there. I'm not saying it's going to, I'm saying it could, because it's been, I mean, it's been a lot. It was all cleared when the Pine Winds Apartments was built. Because at one time, there was going to be a Phase 2, and they just built Phase 1 and didn't build that. Then there was going to be an extended stay hotel there years ago, and we turned that down, then went to court and got it turned down, so. You know the history of this, but anyway. But yes, those traffic numbers about retail versus apartments are one of those things, I had to see the numbers to believe it, but yes.
Yes, sir. Can I answer any other questions?
Please, please come up. Please come up front.
Get here.
How high are these buildings going to be? Above the tree level?
They're three-story buildings, so above the tree level is hard to answer, because I'm not sure how tall the trees are today, and of course, they'll continue to grow. But that three-story averages around 35 to 40 feet tall. Any other questions?
I don't have any. Good.
Again, thank you for your time this evening.
I've just got one additional comment, just to remind the board that the, you know, again, the long-range plan calls for this area as a high-density residential with a minimum of five units. There is no maximum. So the density could actually be higher if this board so permitted, and I just confirmed that with staff.
Morgan, would you happen to have any crime statistics on the Timber Springs?
No, sir. I do not have any with me. I don't know if the police chief is to, I mean, he might be able to speak to how often police are called, but I can't.
Thank you. Chief, could you answer that?
I can't speak specifically to Timber Springs Apartments, but I would suggest that it's not an apples-for-apples comparison, given the nature of the residents there versus what may or may not reside in this complex because of the age restrictions on Timber Springs. I don't think it's a straight-line correlation, if that makes sense.
Location have anything to do with it?
Sir?
Would location also have anything to do with it?
It could. It certainly could, depending on what's surrounding it there. They're two very different portions of town, I think, as far as what's around Timber Springs and what's around this area of town as well. Be happy to come back with specific numbers on Timber Springs, but I don't know that they correlate over to even a logical prediction for this facility.
I would, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm leaving you close the hearing.
All right. Have we done the site plan and the rezoning?
Proceed with discussion and a vote on rezoning.
Yes, sir. Is there any more discussion? Yeah, call for a vote on rezoning.
Well, just a couple of comments. I'm always influenced quite a bit by the Planning Commission and their findings. Obviously, they found it in favor at their hearing. To the concerns about crime, which seem to be a suggestion that people who live in apartments are more criminally inclined, and I'm maybe making a stretch to say that, as one who's lived in an apartment many years ago, I don't necessarily buy into the theory that it's just because you put, you have people in apartments close by, that that is a strong indication that there'd be more crime in the area. And maybe you weren't implying that, but that's what I heard. And I think, for the concerns that I've heard, if you stop and think about what could be put on that property today as it's currently zoned, I've got to believe that if some of those things were, in fact, built under the current zoning, that that would be probably more problematic than an apartment complex there. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion on the rezoning. I think, I think when we consider all the factors and it's in compliance with the UDO, something we should approve.
I make a motion.
I'd like to make one comment. I appreciate the folks that you want to protect the neighborhood in which you live. I think one of the things that I was open to, hoping to hear a lot of different discussion, which is what we've had, I would say that there's one thing that you've got going for you, I mean, for the folks that live in the vicinity, is we questioned years ago when Timber Springs was developed, and I think what we found was what the developer at that time told us he was going to do, he has done. The area's been maintained well. As far as I know, it has a good reputation. So plenty of times that we get first-timers, but this is a, this is, this is an applicant, that this is their business, this is what they stick to, this is their bread and butter, they stay with it, they buy it, develop it, and maintain it. I think that's, that's an intangible that's hard to define in value. But when you reflect on it, then it's one that is, that I think make you feel better about it as compared to what other possibilities may exist, but I'll support the project.
I could echo Mr. Kennedy's remarks about the reputation and the performance of the developer. And I think we also need to keep in mind that in this day and time, we are faced with housing shortages and the need to provide housing for people. Garner is growing amazingly, and this is an opportunity to have housing added to our housing stock from a company that we know and can have had good experiences with.
You ready for, Mayor, Mr. Motion? Excuse me, mister, are you ready for a motion, Mr. Mayor, is what I meant to say. Mr. Mayor, I move that the Town Council find that although the rezoning request is inconsistent with the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, which is detailed in Section 4 of the staff report, it's reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely allow the development of appropriate density of housing in the area in which it is located, and also will allow household living that's attractive to younger families with children, as well as older residents looking to maintain private but smaller. At any rate, and therefore, I move that the Town Council adopt Ordinance Number 20193969 approving rezoning request, CUDZ 1901, and in so doing, also amend the town's Comprehensive Growth Plan from designating the subject property as high-density residential to multifamily residential.
Thank you.
Motion made in second. Further discussion? Hall of Fame vote by standing aye.
Aye.
Call roll, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Marshburn?
Aye.
Councilmember?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Kennedy?
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons?
Aye.
Motion passed before the one. Where we going?
Proceed with the CUPS.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I find that we moved, we find the plans consistent with, we find them consistent with the plans and approve the, except the staff's statements regarding plan consistency with Section 6 of the report as our own, and find the application meets the 10 permit criteria in Section 3.14D, and therefore approve CUP SP 19-01 Pine Ridge Apartments with the three standard conditions and the two-site-specific conditions to be listed on the permit that'll be prepared by staff. Thank you.
Motion in second. Further discussion? Hall of Fame vote by standing aye.
Aye.
Okay, where we going? Bill?
Let's see. The next thing on our agenda would be the, if we go by the list here, let's see. The, let's see, the Fannie Brown Road annexation.
Staff, I'd like to point out that these two annexations before you tonight are related to the two zoning cases under Old Business. So staff would point out that the council may want to open and close the public hearing and may decide to wait to vote on the annexation cases until after you've heard the zoning presentation, if that's what you would like to do. The first case is Annexation Case 1901. The applicant is New Hope Life LLC. The property is located at 699 New Rand Road. The property is just under an acre, at .81 acres. The property is currently zoned R-20. We do have a zoning case to rezone it to R-15. This is a vicinity map of the, of the site, it's outlined in black, and the area that you see shaded in blue is the existing town limits. Directly to the east is the Prentice Place subdivision, so this is an infill lot. I'll be happy to answer any questions on this annexation case. And again, this is related to a zoning case under Old Business.
I'm, I've gotten off place here on mine. Somebody put me what page I'm looking at.
I thought we were on Fannie Brown, but we're apparently not.
Yeah, that's the one that I was looking at.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I waited in order of the case number rather than what was on the agenda, so I apologize for that.
All right, we got this one out of the way.
Don't, if we're going to stick on this one, the only thing we have to revise is O-2 and not O-1. Change in the order of how we're going to do it.
I would just continue on with the one he's on and keep all the numbers the same.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, the numbers are for tracking purposes, and we can go on and continue on with it.
What do you recommend happens next?
I will go on to the next case, if you'd like to wait to vote on the annexation until after you've heard the zoning presentation.
That's good.
Okay. Next case is ANX-1902. The applicant is church, or the owner is Church Live of the Assemblies of God. This is a satellite annexation. The property is located at 9013 Fannie Brown Road. It's 21 acres in size. Current zoning is Wake County R-30. We do have a zoning case to rezone the site to R-20. Site is located here at the, near the south-east corner of Fannie Brown Road and 1010 Road. I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
So your proposal, Mr. Banffery, is that if, that the council should defer making a motion on these and hear the presentation on the zoning, if someone's inclined to adopt the zoning, they come back and adopt these annexations first? Is that where we are?
We would hear the zoning presentations first.
Then come back and consider adopting the annexations.
Because there may be some questions or discussion around the zoning cases.
Mr. Mayor, that would bring up Z-1902, 9013 Fannie Brown Road, and I guess you're the presenter.
So in, so in doing so, we would be deferring the last public hearing on the budget until after those two are over, if you want to hear them side by side? Is that fine?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So would you like for me to do Fannie Brown Road and just stay on the order on the agenda?
Whatever works.
Okay, I'll stick with the order on the agenda, Z-19-02. And the public hearing for this case was held on March the 19th, and since, and this has also gone to Planning Commission on April the 15th. So this is before you tonight for a D, for a decision, and this presentation is a little abbreviated to what was presented at the public hearing. This just focuses on the major issues. The site's 21 acres in size. It's currently in Wake County's jurisdiction, Zone R-30. The requested zoning is Town of Garner, R-20. The list of permissible uses under the proposed zoning is listed on this page. These are the permissible uses under Town of Garner, R-20. With the primary use being single-family detached, it also allows several non-residential uses, including churches, schools, parks, and a few other uses with a special use permit. The Garner Ford Plan does show this area as a medium-density residential designation. The requested zoning, R-20, this zoning district is a little less intense, allows a density that is less than what is recommended by the Garner Ford Plan, so like the previous conditional use rezoning case, this would also involve an amendment to the Garner Ford Plan to re-designate the site from medium-density residential to low-density residential. And that is stated on this page. The public hearing was held on March the 19th, and the applicant spoke in favor of the request. There were no, there were no, there was no opposition from the public on this case. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request, along with the amendment to the Garner Ford Plan to designate the site from medium-density residential to low-density Site, this area of Garner does not have any water and sewer, there is a water line that runs along 1010 Road. Public sewer is not anywhere in this vicinity yet. When 540 comes through and utilities are extended to this area, you will probably see the development intensities increase in this area, but for right now, sewer's not available. One piece of information, the reason for this request, the applicant did communicate to us that there are plans to build a church on the site, and that they wanted to annex and rezone into Town of Garner in order to build a church on the site and connect to town water on 1010 Road. So I just want to give a little background on the reason for this request. Again, the public hearing was already held on this case, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Would you equate this to a lateral rezoning or a downzoning?
It's comparable to the existing Wake County R-30 zoning. The town does not have an R-30 zone, we have R-40 and R-20. Staff was, we recommended the R-20 zone over the R-40 zone, since R-40 allows solar farms and some other uses that would not be permissible in R-20.
But under R-20, a church is allowed?
R-20 churches are allowed, agricultural uses are allowed, which is the predominant use in the area. So if the site, for some reason, they don't move forward with the church at this time, agricultural uses would be a permissible use as well as single-family. The applicant can probably speak more to the, to the timing of the project, but I don't have any of that information. So the applicant, we can come back at a later time with the, with the site plan application.
All right, motion.
Ready for a motion?
Anybody else have anything to say? Yes, sir.
My name is Blair Pittman. I'm with Bobbit Design and Build, we are the applicant, 600 Germantown Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. Just to quickly address one of David's questions on the timing, we are currently working with the church, both on the site planning and the architecture, and just working through budget items, but the intent would be to submit to Garner for site plan approval should the annexation and rezoning happen this summer. That's, that's the aim of the church, they are quickly moving forward as best as we can.
You said potentially soon as this, did you say this?
Yes, sir.
We're good.
Public comment? I'm Michael Marshall, I move the town council find that although the rezoning request is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Growth Plan detailed in Section Four of the staff report, it is reasonable and in the public interest, likely because it will allow appropriate types of community services.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Need to do the rezoning.
Annexation, annexation.
Annexation first.
Annexation first.
The annexation.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt ordinance 2019-3973, the annexation ordinance of Fannie Brown Road property.
Second. Motion second, Hall of favor vote by Senator Allen.
Aye.
All right.
I'd move the town council find that although the rezoning request is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Growth Plan detailed in Section Four of the staff report, it is reasonable in the public interest because it will likely allow appropriate types of community services at the desired location. Therefore, I move further that the town council adopt ordinance 2019-3971 and approve rezoning request is E-19-02, and in doing so, also amend the town's Comprehensive Growth Plan from designating the subject property as medium-density residential to low-density residential.
Second. Motion made in second. Further discussion? Hall of favor vote by Senator Allen.
Aye.
All right. Hey, Bill?
Yeah, open the case and hearing number. Give us the name, Mr. Banffery. When you're prepared to speak on next, what's the number?
Oh, it's a.
Lost on the agenda here.
Sure, it's zoning case 19-01, 699 New Rand Road.
Bring it now, open that case.
This site's located at 699 New Rand Road, which is directly west of the Prentice Place subdivision. That subdivision's Zone R-9, and the project site before you tonight is zoned R-20. It's just under an acre in size, it's .81 acres. The public hearing was held on March the 19th. There was no opposition from the public. The Planning Commission did recommend approval at their meeting on April the 15th. The, the map that you see on the screen shows the zoning in this vicinity. The area directly across the street on the west side is zoned R-20. There's some single-family homes on larger lots there. Directly to the east is Prentice Place, and that is Zone R-9, conditional use, and the minimum lot size in that subdivision is 9,000 square feet. To the north, we do have Kentucky Drive, and that is Zone Multi-Family 1. To the south, we do have some R-20, and a little farther to the south, we do have some R-15 zoning. This chart shows the difference between the existing and the proposed zoning. One difference is the minimum lot size, the current zoning minimum lot size is 20,000 square feet per dwelling unit, proposed would be 15,000 square feet. There are differences with front, rear, and side yard setbacks for the homes. The existing density is around 2.17 units per acre, with the proposed R-15 zoning is around 2.9 units an acre. Maximum height would be the same for both zoning districts. As far as permissible uses, the only use that would go away or no longer be permissible on the site would be the last use, which would be agriculture and silviculture uses. All other uses would be the same. The reason for this request, the site is zoned R-20, which means each lot needs to be 20,000 square feet, and with the lot at .8 acres, which is around 38,000 square feet, the site is too small to subdivide in half. This map shows a proposal. This proposal would move forward with a minor plat application if this zoning is approved tonight. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property in half to build two single-family homes. The minimum, while R-15 would allow a minimum 15,000 square foot lot, the minimum lot size for these lots would be just over 16,000 square feet. Water is along New Rand Road, and sewer connection would be, there is a sewer line on the rear of the site from Prentice Place, so the property has access to water and sewer. This request to R-15 is in line with the medium-density recommendations of the Garner Ford Plan. It does fall within the two and a half to five units an acre. R-15 is around 2.9 units an acre. And there's also some guiding principles that this request would be in harmony with the long-range plan. One would be to support infill housing. This is an infill lot that's, it used to have an old, I guess, a dilapidated damaged house, which was demolished, and the site has been cleaned up. So this, this would be an infill development. And the R-15 zoning is consistent with the surrounding zonings. We do have R-15 in the area. We do have some multifamily up a little north along Kentucky Drive, and we also have some R-20 and R-9 in the area. The public hearing was held on March the 19th, there were no comments from the public at that meeting, and at the meeting on April the 15th, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Just in curiosity, history, the dwelling that was there before, did it catch on fire and burn, or?
I don't have any information on that. I know it had been boarded up for a very long time.
Yes, Mr. Marshall, it did.
Okay, I was thinking it was the same one I'd seen there, yeah, okay.
Do you wish to be heard? Come on up then, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Grady Stevenson, I live at 701 New Rand Road, right, right on the south side of the, and I don't really have a problem with the two houses that are, that have been proposed to be built there. The concern I have is that our driveway is almost entirely on that land, and when my parents bought this property in 1962, that was the driveway that was in use then. I don't know, it probably had been used years before like that, but the driveway will have to be relocated based on this. And what I was wondering about was when Prentice Place was proposed a few years ago, I think they had told us that the part of the driveway that they might need to take, they would fix a driveway for us. Unfortunately, they did not have to take any of the driveway with the way they laid their homes out, but that was just an issue that I had and wanted to raise, if there was any possibility that they would prepare a. that they would prepare a driveway for us to use.
On your, Mr. Stevenson, your house is the one that is, looking up here, your house is the one that's?
Directly south, yes.
Right, right, yeah, right there, okay. I thought, I thought you said, okay, the long narrow lot.
Yes.
Okay.
You say their driveway is on your property, or vice versa?
But our driveway that we've used for 57 years is on their prop, much of it is on their property. And there is no easement, or no recorded easement, or anything like that. It's just the way it, it's been for probably 60-something years. And the contractor told me a few weeks ago, I saw him over there, and I was asking him about it, and he said that they, you know, we would have to, you know, redo the driveway because they would, they would need that for, for what they want. So I didn't know if, I knew when the Preakness Place was being planned, that they had told us that they would prepare us a driveway. So I thought that might be the case, possibly this time, but it's just a concern I wanted to raise.
Let me ask a question of staff then. This is a common occurrence. Is that something that if, if this got rezoned, that you'd address at the site plan phase? Or, I don't know, you tell me, because I mean, that would be all staff.
This would probably be a private matter between the two property owners. I mean, I have heard that the applicant kind of, I had heard there had been some type of verbal agreement, but there's nothing that we could enforce.
Jeff Trezenberg, Planning Director. Members of the council, the only thing that I was aware of when Preakness Place was coming in, I, I would have to go back just to double check, but I didn't recall that this lot here was ever in the mix. If it was, it must have been early on. So I know that this lot did have the same problem, where their driveway was partially on the Preakness lot. And so as part of that approval, they had to make accommodations that if this property was redeveloped and the house didn't burn, or if it was going to be reconstructed, that that driveway get realigned. But to my knowledge, I didn't think that the Preakness proposal had anything to do with this particular driveway.
No, this was a separate, this plot of land was entirely separate from Preakness.
Right, right.
Part of our driveway was, when Preakness was being developed, a part of our driveway was also on their, on their property.
Further back?
Yeah.
On the site?
Further down.
Okay.
And then they had agreed to, if they took that, they would fix a new driveway for us.
Okay, I think that's what's been confusing, is because their drive, the actual driveway for the subject site tonight onto New Rand, that was a formal, formal agreement in the Preakness approval that, that driveway get relocated. But I don't think there's ever been anything to address the actual entrance for your existing driveway off of New Rand.
And I was just wondering if that might possibly be something they could do.
If I'm hearing you correctly, if, if we approve this, I mean, we can't enforce the driveway issue. It, it might boil down to a gentleman and the other property owner trying to work out some type of a, of a mutual agreement to assist him with somehow keeping the driveway, or at least keeping a portion of it, I don't know.
Being, being that I'm not a lawyer, but, and Bill might have some input on this, I know if you've been using a driveway with some kind of access for years and years and years, there is some kind of right of, I think, continued use, but I think it would have to be just a private matter where you get it worked out. But I don't think they can just take it away.
This gentleman here, the town engineer, you might want to talk to him about what's involved in getting a driveway permit just to go onto the road.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anybody from the applicant in this matter? That's from the public. That'll close the hearing, Mr. Mayor.
What?
I guess that'll close the hearing.
Okay. Close this hearing.
Yeah, we covered the public hearings, right.
You have an annexation case?
A new and old business, we done that.
To the annexation ordinance for this property would be adopt ordinance 2019-3972 for the property of 699 New Rand Road.
Aye.
That's your motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor, vote by my side.
Aye.
Grady, would the next one find this application consistent with the comprehensive plan and, and a move that the council accepts staff's recommendation regarding zoning consistency with the comprehensive plan detailed in section four of the staff report as our own, and are therefore in further move that the town council adopt ordinance 2019-3970, approving rezoning request is Z19-01, as it, as it is a reasonable, as it is reasonable and in the public interest because it will likely allow the development of appropriate density of housing in the area in which it is located.
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, vote by my side.
Aye.
Okay, one of the council members has a question. It would take a 15-minute break. And so I'll call us into recess.
Stay with the new old business and finish the two items that are, yeah, both, we might as well finish both items, and then we'll come back to the, the public hearing for the budget once those two are complete.
All right, Chris, go.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Chris Johnson, Town Engineer. This item tonight is for White Oak Sewer Contract. Got a brief presentation, walk you through a quick summary of the project, talk about the bid opening, the funding for the project, staff's recommendations, and the upcoming project schedule. So as some may, may, may not know, familiar with this, project's been around for quite a while, but this is in southeastern Garner. If you're right here, this is just south of US 70, this is the Camelot subdivision that's off of Rayner Road. And the purpose of this project is to install a sanitary sewer interceptor that consists of 12-inch sewer and 24-inch sanitary sewer from an existing stub that's down here just south of the Camelot border, and run that north behind the Camelot subdivision, and then turning to east across the future 540 corridor, where we will tie in right south of US 70. We had the bid opening on April 23rd. We had a total of seven bids. There's a lot of interest on this particular project from the contracting community. The engineer's estimate for the project was $782,175. The low bid came in from North State Water and Sewer with a bid of $597,536, which is approximately 23.5% below the engineer's estimate. North State's MWE participation was 5.4%. The project funding, this is going to be a balance of acreage fee reserve balance and unallocated fund balance if needed. We'll also be bringing forward a budget amendment for, including a 5% contingency. And the recommendation is to award the project to North State Water and Sewer and authorize the town manager to execute a contract in amount not to exceed $597,536.
Right.
One question. It was a statement and then a question. I'm glad the engineer's estimate was not the low bid.
We are always glad for that. And there's actually...
Occasionally, that happens. A lot of times in today's environment, it doesn't. When I was reading through this, something just struck me that the acreage fee revenues, and I thought I had seen that, that terminology somewhere else in the budget, but I'm thinking I was looking at, at water and sewer capacity fees that were being used in, in the budget for some particular purpose. So this is acreage fees, not water and sewer capacity fees, just clarifying that. And other than that, I'm ready to move to approve.
Yeah, and one other thing, just want to mention that it wasn't on the presentation, but it was in your backup. This project is partially eligible for reimbursement through the city of Raleigh's utility program, and we're expecting that to be approximately $313,000 in reimbursement. And we'll get that formalized. It's not due, you don't get the reimbursement until after construction is complete, and they, they get it approved by council, but that's the estimated reimbursement amount.
Essentially, half, half of it, or?
Right. Right. And then as far as project schedule, following council's approval, we'll execute contracts, begin sending out property owner notifications with a tentative notice to proceed in mid-June. It's got 120-day contract time, which means that they should be completed and operational by mid-October. Be glad to answer any questions.
I think we do a motion. Want to make a motion?
I am.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move that we accept the staff recommendation and award the White Oak Sewer Project to North State Water and Sewer, and authorize the town manager to execute the initial contract with North State Water and Sewer for $597, excuse me, for five, yeah, $597,536.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor, vote by my side. Rodney.
Mr. Mayor, item number four, the Depot Park Site Plan, as part of the planning to move the historic depot to the, the lot at the corner of Main Street and Pearl Street. We saw the need to have a site plan done, and in having meetings with the Garner Area Historical Society, they had engaged a consultant landscape architect to do a pretty much renderings for them, just so they'll have some, some marketing materials and some other things to show as they go about trying to plan their fundraising. And so knowing we would need a site plan eventually to bring it forth to council for approval, just like any other development, we, we entertained the, I guess, the, the process of having the same architect, landscape architect do a site plan for that project. It's something we're going to need, and something that it would expedite it by having that same architect do it. Your, well, I guess bidding laws do require a resolution in order to circumvent the bidding process for certain reasons such as this. If you have somebody that's familiar with, with the project and already doing work there, and in conjunction is under $50,000, so it allows us to not have to go through the regular bidding process, and we can contract with Mr. Tate. To do that, one thing that will do is that will expedite the project a little bit quicker, since he's already gathering information, and the turnaround time he's, he's proposing is going to be five to six weeks. And that will allow us hopefully to bring this project to you sometime in, you know, the June, hopefully as early as June, possibly July timeframe for approval, and to present other information about the project so we can keep it moving forward, so.
So the first thing you need is a resolution to exempt the town from the Depot Park Site Plan.
From the bidding, your, your regular bidding procedures to use a sole, sole source contract.
Trying to find the proper title from that in the resolution, I just, I moved that we adopt resolution 2019-2375 regarding the site plan work required for the depot site.
Further discussion, all in favor, vote by my side.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye. I'd like to follow on and recommend approval of the contract with Tony Tate and Associates, subject to, I can keep my finger on the dial here and get it to the right place. Bear with me. Sitting there, I had written it down. Approval of the contract with Tony Tate, subject to review by our attorney.
I suggest we have three paragraphs on page 106 we need to try to massage out of there.
That was a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor, vote by my side.
Aye.
Thank you, and just to give you a little more content, I will be meeting with the Garner Area Historical Society Friday, and we're going to iron out some more of the details and get some more, just iron out the costs so we can bring the cost proposal to you as well as the site plan. And we're going to try to do that maybe all in one meeting, but it's possible, it may come to you in two separate meetings, but we'll see how that goes, and we'll let you know. All right.
Okay, we need a public hearing, right.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It's my honor to present to you FY19, FY20 budget summary. So some major themes, the recommended budget is the first step in a multi-year process to address some structural issues that we identified as part of the five-year budget process. So as part of that process, we determined that at this point, we believe that growth and core requirements exceeds available revenues despite continued expansion within the real estate market. So we have additional growth in the real estate market and revenue categories, but we, that growth is not sufficient to meet our core requirements, and this budget is the first step towards addressing those issues. When we put together this budget, we decided to balance it using all available mechanisms. We thought of three different strategies, the first being to get by this year and try to figure it out any way that we could, and that would have provided us some additional time to perform analysis over the next year for FY21. On the opposite end of the spectrum would be to make some dramatic changes that could potentially address the structural issue and permanently fix it. And the third one would be to use a balance of all the different items available, so additional revenue reductions in expenditures, and also using one-time balances to cover one-time requirements to allow us to meet the requirements within this year's budget, but then also provide us additional time within next year and future years to address future issues. So we went with that approach, and as I said, it allowed us to meet most of the core requirements addressed and required within this year's budget, but there were still some items that needed or warranted funding or consideration, but we weren't able to fund. Some additional highlights, the property tax is recommended to increase three cents from 53.25 to 56.25 cents per $100 of assessed value. The budget includes five new positions, and also includes reductions of almost $417,000 in unfunded decision packages of over $1.5 million. So the multi-year forecast was a big factor in this year's budget, so I want to spend a little bit of time on that. The forecast was developed as a tool to be prepared by staff to review baseline funding requirements in future years. The whole idea behind it was to make sure that we were going to have sufficient funding, sufficient revenues to meet our future requirements, baseline and additional requirements that we have coming up. And as we went through that exercise, it became more and more clear that we were going to have some, some challenges in the future years in terms of having a structural deficit where... deficit where expenditures are exceeding revenues. This was the slide that ultimately summarized the chart, so you can see FY20, as we prepared it several weeks ago, we had total available resources of 3.6 million, less total expenditures of 37.45 million, which was a projected shortfall of 1.45 million, and that shortfall continued into future years, FY21 was 1.38, and so on into FY22, '23, and '24. So, as we were doing this, in addition to trying to fix the FY20 budget, one of the things we were trying to figure out as staff is, you know, what's causing this, what are the issues that we need to address? And on the expenditure side, a lot of what's challenging the budget are budget drivers that are out of staff's control, out of council's control, there are things that are going to happen, whether we want them to or not. So, for example, in this year, we have funding of over $163,000 to cover costs associated with the November 2020 election. We also have funding of nearly $184,000 to cover solid waste costs, and those are costs associated with additional customers and a small contract rate increase, but it's baseline costs that are gonna be going up as we have additional increases in population. We also have allocated significant funding to cover costs associated with additional town facilities and properties. There's funding included in the budget of nearly $134,000 to meet the state requirement that we provide additional contributions towards retirement for employees.
First, Mike, is that the November 2020, the November 2019 election?
2020.
That's in a future budget year, I mean, that's in a whole nother budget year, that's why I was asking, because 2020...
It's the, yeah, it's the 19 election, I apologize.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Are we budgeting this year for the election a year and a half, and I just want to make sure.
I heard it was six, no, I didn't hear, I saw it was 63,000, not 163.
And then there were some additional costs that came along.
There's two, there's two, yeah, there's early voting, and then there's general election. There are two separate billings, so we have to pay about 60-something thousand to have early voting, and then the general election is anywhere 90-something to 100,000, estimate. So, it's two separate voting processes the town has to pay for, that we didn't have to pay for a year ago.
And there is a range in there, and we went on the higher end of the range, but that was, that appeared to be the direction that was most likely to head versus being on the lower end of the range.
And the reason there's a range is because we don't know who's gonna have primaries and, you know, well, we know who's gonna have primaries, we don't know who's gonna have early voting, who all's gonna have early voting, and then runoffs and all those type of things, so all the voting sites have to be open at the same time, so we had the, we went with the higher estimate of the range. It could change depending on what other towns, what other decisions other towns make.
This is not, this election is not restricted just to the town of Garner. Town of Garner voting?
No, no, the, the, no, there's a general election for 19, other seats up, I think school board and some other things.
Municipal, I mean, excuse me, yeah, school board, county commission, I'm not sure.
County commissioners last year.
We're learning our specifics on the fly. Go ahead, Mike.
And then the last funding increment was funding of nearly $437,000 to cover merit-based salary adjustments if positions approved out of cycle or partially funded in FY1819. So, for this, approximately $251,000 was for merit-based salary increases, and then the additional amount of $186,000 was to cover positions that were approved out of cycle or partially approved last year, so those are the IT project manager position and the inspections positions approved out of cycle this year, and then there were a variety of positions as proved as part of the FY1819 budget that were approved for less than the full year costs, so those are then coming into the full baseline this year. In addition to budget drivers that the town has limited control over, there are a couple of budget drivers that were decisions that we made that are ultimately gonna have a positive impact on the town's operations, but are currently having an impact on our financial situation. So, as part of this year's budget, funding of $365,000 is being redirected to support street resurfacing efforts, so in prior years, we used the full $15 for the motor vehicle fee to support, the first $5 was for any administrative activity, and the other $10 we were using to support the street division and public works, because the language allowed that, to allow those, that funding to be utilized for street maintenance activities. Now, we're using that entire amount to cover street resurfacing activities, which will ultimately have a positive impact, but does impact this current year budget. And the town is also in the process of transitioning away from using debt financing to pay for vehicles, and as part of this process, we are paying the annual debt service associated with previous loans to purchase vehicles, so that is $354,000, but at the same time, we're also funding the vehicles associated with Vert, so that's having an impact on the operating budget. That's on the expenditure side, a variety of the different issues that have complicated the budget and made it a challenging budget year, but we also wanted to look on the revenue side to determine if there are any issues or challenges there, because on the surface, as you look through the budget highlights, it's a pretty positive year, so you can see the increase in town-wide assessed property value of 190.7 million, or 5.5%. There was an increase in sales tax of 4.5%, a little over $301,000. There was an increase of $130,000, or 31.7% interest income, an increase of $102,000, or 43.8% in recreation fees, and then an increase in motor vehicle fees. So, as staff dug into the revenue piece and tried to determine if there were any issues, we looked at the slide that, or chart that I think everybody would be familiar with, but we looked at it in a slightly different way. So, every year, the City of Raleigh produces a chart very similar to this, where they look at the average household impacts, tax impact for localities in Wake County. But, what the City of Raleigh does that's different than what we've done here, is they use their per-average tax value, so the average tax value in Raleigh, to calculate the cost impact for all the different municipalities. So, basically, apex in this scenario would have the same housing values as Raleigh, Garner would have the same housing values, so it's not reflective of reality in terms of the average tax impact when you factor in the cost of housing in localities. So, what we did was, using GIS, we reviewed the average tax impact, or the average assessed value of homes, using a Wake County GIS, to figure out what the actual value was for all the different localities, and then applied the tax rate to that value. When you use this methodology, as you can see, Garner is the lowest per-household tax impact in the region, so a lot of that just has to do with the fact that one penny here has a significantly less impact than it does in other localities based on the tax value of the property located in the town.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Comment? I read the comments in the budget, and it keeps referring, and you're referring to in it, is the tax impact. In fact, our taxes are not the lowest in the county. Household costs, including solid waste and water and sewer and stormwater, I don't disagree with your numbers, but it's, our taxes are higher because we include solid waste fees in it, so anyhow, it's just a matter of no inflation, but it's the total household impact, but not necessarily restricted to tax.
Yes, sir, the property tax rate isn't, not the lowest, but yes, the average household impact in terms of total dollars. What I would also point out, using that same methodology with the three-cent tax increase that's included in the recommended budget, the town's average, the average cost to the household in Garner would still be the lowest behind, in front of Knightendale, at $1,713, and just looking future, looking at an additional number, if we would increase the rate a full six cents, we'd still be the second lowest impact in terms of household impact within the region, just behind Knightendale at $1,768.
The average per single-family household impact. Ken is right, it is taxed, but also your single-family property impact, which includes everything that's in there.
So, with the three-cent tax increase included with the revenue summary here, you can see that the largest increase is obviously in property taxes, almost $2.1 million, and then you can see additional increases in sales tax and other taxes, primarily due to the 4.5% increase in sales tax, an additional increase in fees for service primarily related to the recreation fees, and then the interest earnings increase as well, and all of that's offset by decreases in other financing sources. As I mentioned, we took a balanced approach this year with the budget, so in addition to revenue increases, we also included reductions of almost $417,000, and there are unfunded decision packages totaling $1.5 million in the budget, so a large number of reductions that could have potential programmatic impacts, and then decision packages, some of which were from worthy items. In addition, this budget includes appropriated fund balance of $625,976 to meet one-time requirements, and was part of the balanced approach. I would also point out that this is a reduction from the prior year, and that many of the items funded here are going to be phasing out over the course of time, so we have funding for the UDO, the final funding increment for that, and that in the future will not be required. We are also making the second of three payments associated with getting off of debt financing for Vert, so in future years, that will continue to go down and then phase off, and the other items, we would just have to phase out as we move into the FY21. So, with those two strategies, raising revenues, reductions, and then also fund balance, we were able to fund a variety of, a couple of decision packages that were critical for operations. So, the first was almost $95,000 for Parks and Ground Supervisor, and ultimately, this position will improve span and control issues within public works, and allow the manager to actually get out and inspect the work and oversee work as opposed to performing administrative We've also included funding for a building maintenance technician. This position will primarily be looking over the recreation center, since we've added the, we've added Town Hall Square footage, and obviously, the recreation center as well next year, we felt it was necessary to provide an additional position to meet those requirements. We've also provided funding for a construction inspector position. This position is required, as the workload of the current position has grown to the point where there is not adequate time devoted to each of the projects, and we anticipate these projects to continue into the future budget years. We've also provided, as I noted, the final funding increment for the UDO rewrite, $45,000 for Garner Economic Development Corporation, and this will allow the GEDC to transition from a singular focus entity to a town-wide economic development nonprofit. Then we've also included funding for police grant positions, and these positions are required based on increases in the population and land area over the last several years, and they also benefit from the fact that 85% of the year-one costs associated with the positions, so both personnel and the startup costs, will be covered by the grant, so that would result in savings of approximately $204,000, because that first year of police officer positions, you're paying more for the vehicle and for the equipment than you actually are for the position, so you get a really good bang-for-your-buck factor with the 85% coverage in the first year. We also included funding for the WRAIL campaign, so funding will cover the cost running of six-month promotional articles about the town on WRAIL website, and funding for a middle school camp. The current camp, Camp Kaleidoscope, has reached its max capacity, so this camp will provide an additional option, so it will be a middle school camp, which will allow kids, older kids, to participate in this camp, and younger kids to continue to participate in Camp Kaleidoscope, and it will also, I just wanted to note that the net cost based on revenues will only be about $2,300, and that's based on fees associated with the program, and the long-term cost impact, the net impact will be about $3,000 moving forward, so it's a low-cost option to provide additional programming. In terms of future action, we're gonna continue to utilize the multi-year forecast to ensure the town's position to address future requirements. We're also gonna review funding priorities as part of the FY21 budget process to make sure that the, where we're putting our money is aligned with council's priorities, and that we're getting the most bang for the, bang for buck with the dollars that we're And I'll just lay out the budget schedule, so tomorrow, we have the budget work session, then on June 3rd, we have the recommended budget public hearing, June 18th, proposed council adoption, and then ultimately, the adopted budget would be published online and on August 15th. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
Mike, the things you've just covered should be in our budget book, right?
Yes, sir.
Unless I've just simply overlooked it, I didn't see the Garner Economic Development funding amount on the pages under expenditure summary in my budget book.
That would be included in their write-up, it was more of a council direction to include that funding, so I think we did treat that one differently.
It's just a different place in the budget, then, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The economic development.
Yeah.
Economic development.
Partners.
Okay, so it would be under economic development?
Yes, sir.
Budget.
If I go back two or three slides, and there's a, one more, there you go. Mike, you and Ken, can you explain the, for the benefit of all of us, about the town's contribution to GEDC?
Mike, I, yeah, I think why the hell with that, if Joe is still here, it would be better.
Probably John is expert on explaining the transition that we're making that...
So, I think after a number of years of, Joe, come on.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council, yes. So, the GEDC is facing a few different things. One is a IRS mandate that we, with the GEDC, receive money from outside sources to maintain its nonprofit status. The other is to allow the Economic Development Corporation to expand its focus and provide a greater impact to the community, and really do more economic development-type programming throughout the town of Garner, instead of just being a singular focus in this particular instance, at the Technology Center site.
And if there's anything else about the tax status that you care to hear, we'd be glad to elaborate more on that.
No, I just thought, the, I didn't know the answer to it, and I'd be a little bit closer than the average citizen, but that was a good chunk of change, and it was an asterisk, so.
And the critical, the criticality for bringing that forward this year in what's a challenging budget year, is there are financial implications for the GEDC that far surpass the amount that the town would have to contribute to reinstate its 501(c)(3) status, so that it is not considered a private foundation, and so the need for that contribution in this upcoming budget cycle is to allow that status to return back to a publicly-supported 501(c)(3) that will result in a net savings to that organization, which ultimately helps the town as their partner.
And Mr. Marsh, you can see that, that funding on page 44 in the, your budget book.
General Fund 44.
General Fund 44, in the expenditure summary chart at the bottom.
Okay, yeah.
And I know it's...
I could contribute one thought at this point, you know, the balloon's squeezed different ways, but the way the balloon squeezes in a very favorable fashion is that we're very close to, next week, hopefully, closing on the purchase of the County Road property by GEDC to hold for the town of Garner, so you're getting benefits on what we're doing.
No question to that, it's just seems...
I just want to make sure that you're getting your money worth for it.
They're actively, active in different projects and buying and selling, and...
Sure, and I know it's been some time, but we presented the same work plan, or strategic plan, if you want to call it that, that we presented to the GEDC, we presented to the Town Council. I know it's been a few months back, and if it's necessary, certainly we'll bring it back forward, so you all know exactly where the... back forward so you all know exactly where this, you know, where these appropriations would go and how they would assist with accomplishing those goals. But, but the appropriation is a measure of twofold, or few-fold, actually.
Fine, fine, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I was following along in my general thing here, and that's the one item I didn't see. So, see you now, that's good.
Can I clear up something I said earlier about the elections? There's municipal elections in the fall, and we have to pay separate fee for early voting for that, no school board election. And there's primaries in March as part of the general election, and my understanding from the quote we got, we have to pay all of those charges upfront so that we will have to pay for the general election in one fee in excess of $90,000, and we'll have to pay for the early voting in excess of $63,000 or so thousand dollars. And those numbers could fluctuate depending on what other communities decide to do, so.
Actually, what Michael had down was halfway right because it's 2020 and 2019. Both elections.
Still, still part of the same budget cycle.
Same budget, yes. Still part of the fiscal year ending 2020.
Any additional questions?
Possible to, to print this and just have it available tomorrow sometime during the meeting?
Yes, sir, and most of these slides will be included in the materials for tomorrow as well. There's some of them.
Okay. Looking ahead to tomorrow, one of the things that I sent along, I tried to send along a memo of questions to everybody this afternoon, and it, email didn't recognize my name or computer didn't like it and rejected it. So I finally got one through to Rodney. One of the questions on there, and you alluded to it tonight in your presentation, you used the term structural issues, and then another place core requirements. And in the budget message, there's a thing called structural issues as well and baseline operating requirements. All of those are kind of in the same generic context. If, if we could just have a discussion of that tomorrow and its implications, not, not tonight, but it's a, they have implications regarding funding issues. And then I left that, just, just brief tomorrow, but that's, when you see it, it doesn't ring a bell until later on where you, when you see the dollars. So just connect the two.
Yeah, we got, I did get your email, so should be able to answer, answer those questions for you tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, we're, we're thinking that possibly the public hearing didn't get open, so just officially, if you could, open the public hearing.
Okay.
Since we're required to have, have one for the.
Public hearing is now open.
Thanks. And we do primarily do this to see if there's any public comment. Generally, there's not a lot of public, but.
Charles Denji, 1316 Pine View Drive, Garner, North Carolina, 27529. So my public comment, based on the, the budget which has been proposed, I see the recommendation for a 3% property tax increase.
Three cents.
Three cents, not three percent.
Three cents.
Yes, yes.
Which, also Wake County is proposing that they raise their property taxes by six cents this year, and we just had a three cent raise. I think as being stewards of the money of the town, as well as making sure that we control the cost here of living, not just for, well, the cost of living for the people who live here, specifically focused on our lower-income folks and the folks who are on a fixed income, we want to try to make sure that we keep those costs in line. And as a taxpayer, I would hope that we would not look to increase the taxes and instead look for ways to decrease the budget wherever possible and at all costs avoid the three cent property tax increase. Thank you.
Was it Pine View or Long View, I'm sorry?
Pine View.
Pine View.
I got you, okay, thank you, that's what it was. Thanks.
Any further? Yeah, I think staff has no more to add.
Yeah, no further comments.
All right, let's close the public hearing, need a motion.
Just close the public hearing.
How much is that three cent worth? Is it over a million dollars?
In terms of our town household, it's about $60. In terms of the full town, each is about $25,000, so.
And we will pick this back up at eight o'clock in the morning, Mr. Mayor, I believe.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty official start time. We would like to have everybody there in time to get settled in and get refreshments at eight, at eight, and then we'll start properly at eight thirty.
What's with, what's with? I'm going to the, to the.
We're going to do reports.
You want to make some? Is there a committee report ready yet? I would just confirm that Law and Finance met with the representative of the Fire Department on May 2nd, was it, I believe? And so we received information from them that you'll find in your budget. Didn't take any formal action on that, but I think we're probably inclined to support the recommendation of the town, but we can discuss that some more tomorrow.
And then also the other discussion we had.
Excuse me, yeah. Yeah, the town staff has adopted a draft policy that would give some guidance to us when it comes to the naming of, of town facilities or entities, probably precipitated by the persons who came before this council to request consideration of renaming, I believe, the Ranrod Park for deceased alderman Jackie Johns. And so we received that and had a pretty good discussion about some issues related to it. And so we'll probably be prepared to bring that to the council at the, did we say the second meeting in May, Rodney? So I think it'll, I think it'll provide good guidance, both as we consider the petition relating to Councilmember Johns, but also to future kinds of inquiries of that type. So, so we'll plan to have that for you at the second meeting in May.
Now, in your, pulling up here on the agenda, you said town facilities, did you also say if you wanted to name a town street? Is that included in that also?
It covers.
It covers basically anything the town owns, but I'm trying to remember.
Make sure.
We define facilities as could be buildings, streets, land, park. So it, it is broad enough that it could include streets, although we didn't spell streets out specifically, but it's town-owned.
Okay.
Streets, I think, was included in the definition, so.
Can recall, but it's pretty broad. I think the intent was to include most, any items that you might customarily consider to name some, to use a name for.
And you, I'm prepared to make some manager reports.
Let's start, I can't quit. Well, you want to let the manager go first?
I don't know. Just getting late.
Okay, all right. You have Garner info in your packet. Just some reminders real quick. The benefit enrollment starts today, so for any council member that is on town benefits, you know, be prepared to go to those information sessions and complete that. Budget work session tomorrow morning starting at eight in the training room. There will be a public meeting on Thursday, the ninth, at five o'clock to help shape the Parks and Rec Cultural Resources Master Plan, and that will be held at the GPAC Thursday at five o'clock. And then I was told to remind everybody that Sunday is Mother's Day.
You better not forget that.
Yeah. And then a public meeting next Thursday on the 16th at six o'clock for the Timber Drive sidewalk connectors, and that will be held here in the town hall training room. And then other reminder is ICS training, that the modules, completion of the modules, the deadline for May the 15th was set for that. And then the other item is invitation to the Respect for Law banquet for the Police Department. That's at the Optimist Club on May the 13th at six o'clock, so. And I believe some of those dates are on your calendars that you received at the last meeting, so. That's all, that's all I have.
Mr. Kennedy.
Have, are, are plans in motion to, to start maintaining the Jürgen property?
Yes.
Give us an idea of what might be happening there.
Yes, Mr. Roy Lance has been in conversation with Forest Jones, Public Works Director, and they're developing a plan for maintenance, so.
Yes, that's right. We, I think our, our staff is going to mow back a little ways from the road just to keep it presentable while we figure out what our long-term plan will be for the maintenance on the entire property. But it's, it's on their, on their radar to get it taken care of in the interim while we figure out if we're going to, are we going to contract, what, you know, what would that look like on a permanent basis?
Let me offer one thought, not suggestion, but thought that's been given to me in times past. We, we got some criticism when we were developing a contract for roadway, maintenance cutting, grass cutting, and about going outside and put, and going beyond Garner limits and, and using a large contractor when we had a, a number of smaller operations located within close proximity. I was wondering, it, this may have some, I'm not sure if it has any special requirements, but this may, just this particular site may be more suitable to a smaller operation that would be well within their capability that, and you might be able to modify it a lot easier if there's any particular things about maintenance of the house and that, and that sort of thing. I'd just offer that as, as an idea to come before when we tried to get a broader base contract. I'll leave that up to y'all, but it's, that appeared before, and you may have somebody that, that would particularly be interested in this sort of thing. It doesn't necessarily yield itself to the straight right-of-way grass mowing proposition. So food for thought, and, and at the same time, at, what, you'll, will that include a plan for security of the facility for both of the homes?
Yeah, I was mentioning the grass because that's probably the most visible thing for the public, but yeah, there, there are already no trespassing signs on the property, and we'll be going in to do some other things to the house to make sure that we can secure it while we figure out what the long-term plan is there as well.
Any need to change locks? Would that keep, that, they wouldn't go through the door in the first place, it's easy to go through a window, I suppose.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we feel pretty comfortable that we've got reasonable control over who has keys to the property. I mean, we could certainly look at doing that, but I, I agree. I think if, if a vandal was looking to damage the property, I, I don't think the lack of a key is.
They're not going in through the first door.
Yeah.
I'll, I've got one other comment, but I, this other people that would be involved, I'll wait till tomorrow. That's all I have.
Great, great, great.
I'll pass.
Me? I think probably all council members received the same email that I did from Mr. John Tipton. I think he raises an interesting concern. I'm not sure how well it can be addressed, but it's more noticeable to me when I'm out walking about our fair town. He asked the question, is there an ordinance in Garner dealing with vehicle noise and sites? And certainly I have seen and heard on there, there are certainly vehicles in our town that people seem to almost enjoy sounding off their muffler systems or whatever. They're extremely loud, disruptive in my opinion, but at any rate, I probably should have looked up to see what, what kind of a noise ordinance we have, and something like this would probably be difficult to enforce. But I thought I would raise it since, since he had mentioned it. I think he mentioned it to me in person, then he sent an email. So, I don't know, don't want to spend much time on it, but do you have any comments, Mr. Manager?
I sent Mr. Tipton, Tipton a follow-up email, letting him know that we do have a loud and disturbing noise ordinance. It does not specify a decibel levels that he mentioned, however, it does give the police maybe a little more broad leeway to, you know, discern whether it's disturbing neighbors or the public. It's, you know, kind of a fine line there, but, you know, a lot of times, he was complaining, he, he had some concerns about neighbors, but the noise could be coming from somebody passing through, so you also have to think about that. So it may not be the easiest thing to enforce on every vehicle that comes through Garner, but we'll, I think we're going to take a look at Mr. Tipton's situation.
Okay, I, I think it's worthwhile. Like I said, I've observed particularly when I'm outside walking about, it doesn't happen every day, and I realize it's one of those things where, you know, the police can't enforce it unless they see it or hear it at the time, I guess. But it is certainly an irritant and something unpleasant, something I wish people would be more. Okay, having said that, let me go to a more positive thing. I've had the great privilege in the last couple of days of, of meeting some of our fine high school seniors that are graduating from our one high school, the other South Garner doesn't have graduates yet. But it's been a real encouraging process to meet some of these fine young people and to hear them express themselves, to see the academic accomplishments that they have made, to hear of their future plans, sometimes college, sometimes technical school, or maybe going to work. Generation or so coming after us has a lot to offer, and so have the chance to greet any of them to do so. They're, they're quite an outstanding group. Right.
With regard to the noise ordinance, I wouldn't mind getting some relief from motorcycles turning down Creech Road and winding it out all the way down. It's, it's a continuous problem, so that's not just one part of town, it's in several parts. I've had complaints about flooding at the corner, that would be the southwest corner of Jürgen Road and 70, when, particularly when it rains, but water's standing there. And this particular, I saw the flooding myself, but this particular individual said something about going up over sidewalks, I didn't see that. But again, at Jürgen Road, southwest corner, aren't making a right turn, you have to ride through water for, that stands for a good long while after it's been raining.
First of all, I'd say thank you to the Garner Police for your service rendered. And I will say that the mural on the side of Full Bloom Coffee on downtown is a beautiful sight. It is one that is leading, I think, toward the goal of downtown Garner of being a place of, of arts and various other activities. And it's definitely an eye-opener, and it gets your attention because it lets you know downtown is right here. All I have, Mr. Mayor.
If I have anything. Just wanted to move that we go into closed session. Just wanted to move that we go into closed session pretty briefly. I, I don't know what the statutory statute would be, would be 43. 3161188, excuse me. Motion to go to closed session.
Some moves.
Hold on, favor vote, I say aye. Aye. Okay, we need to go into closed session for a matter.
We went, we went into closed session for a personnel matter, Mr. Mayor, and no action was taken. Now we're back in open section, session. I move that we adjourn, open session.
Take it.